Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, November 4th, 2024. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Councilman Sharlin.
That's fine. Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the representative republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have proclamations. We'll take Councilwoman Smith once she arrives. Can we read, we have two to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, November 4th, 2024 to be Get Involved, Inc. Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Mosley presents, now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare November 3rd, 2024 to be East End Brewing Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamations have been approved. We'll move on to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that rules council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which may be before City Council, profanity is not permitted. Once you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. First registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Bell's Hoover, Reykjavik, Iceland. Vote by voter verification for whom. RLM copyright 2020. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024 and 2028. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org is one website. A new website is Global Information Intelligence Network.net. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council, PCC, is the vote. Lucidity and illusion. Lucidity and illusion, layer one. Citizens, you can check your vote, of course. Of course, you cannot check for whom. Information that you can is misinformation. Citizens cannot check to determine vote misplacement and misapplication. Lucidity, no. Illusion, yes. Layer two. Citizens in Pittsburgh and non-Pittsburgh, you can know the county individuals and institutions and corporations doing the vote count for you. Your local city government will inform you. Who is it for Pittsburgh? The PCC tells us. No, it does not. Lucidity, no. Illusion, yes. Layer two, continued. Allegheny County AC, Election Division ACED manager is David Voight, 412-350-4500 DV. David Voy at AlleghenyCounty.us. Who elected him? Sarah Inamorato SI, AC Chief Executive Claimant is over DV. Sarah.inamorato@AlleghenyCounty.us. GIS and GIN and RLM, lucidity. The ACSI and PCC with Ed Ganey, illusion. Layer three. Citizens, you can know your vote recording system for your city. What is the VRS for Pittsburgh? The Pittsburgh City Council does not say. It's illusion. Lucidity provider is myself and the Global Intelligence Society. The VRS for Pittsburgh is Election Systems and Software, ESSvote.com. But Pittsburghers did not get to choose, did not get to vote on the ES and EAS or any other alternative. And layer four. Citizens of the United States. 5 November 2024, you elect the President of the United States. No, that's an illusion. It's misinformation. It is a lie. 6 January 2025, the Electoral College legally elects the President of the United States. Lucidity offered by myself. Gore won in 2000 and Hillary Clinton won in 2016 using the popular vote. But the Electoral College voided that. The Electoral College, in my view, in the view of millions of us, sabotages the US-American Republican democracy. Who are these electors? How dare they? Because, in our view, the anti- will of the people on this US-American Constitution says so. If you accept these illusions, layers one through four, and I do not, then you are delusional. This is Zombieland. The 5th of November is our Day of the Dead.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone here in chambers wishing to speak before council, please come forward at this time. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak. Is there anyone here in chambers? If not, we will move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Sharlin.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1113. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into a professional service agreement or agreements with United Diagnostic Services for professional services relating to voluntary health screenings for all Bureau of Fire personnel for a total cost not to exceed $1,178,000 over five years.
And that takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1114. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing consultants for plans and studies by $400,000 and increasing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $400,000.
Thank you. Now, Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1115. Resolution granting unto Sports and Exhibition Authority of Pittsburgh their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, at no cost to the city, raised entrances with flat landings, railings, and stairs. A stair wall and ballards located at the building loading dock. A stair wall with handrail located near the building entrance. And a vault will be constructed in the right-of-way at 1201 Wiley Avenue, 3rd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1116. Resolution providing for cooperation agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Regional Transit in an amount not to exceed $100,000 to support the development of an equitable transit-oriented development program around to be completed new station on the East Busway at Brushton Street. Bill Number 1123. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement, agreements and/or amendments with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the purpose of municipal sewer compliance at volunteer ball fields in the Carrick Neighborhood at a city cost not to exceed $486,808 over a period of one year.
Thank you. And that takes us to Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill 1117. Resolution amending Resolution Number 525 of 1990, effective May 24, 1990, entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director, the Department of Public Works, to execute a long-term agreement with the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority and the Township of North Fayette to enlarge the area serviced by the Sanitary Authority to provide sewage treatment services for the above located in the Township of North Fayette by authorizing the Mayor and the Director, Department of Public Works, to execute an amended agreement with Alcasan and the Township of North Fayette in a form substantially similar to the agreements attached as Attachment A.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1118. Ordinance amending Title I, Administrative Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 177(c), Gender Equity Commission, in order to align the scope of work with the jurisdiction of the city government and ensure inclusivity in the commission's actions and memberships. And Bill Number 1119. Resolution authorizing the city's acceptance of a deed and/or deeds conveying all the right title and interest, if any, in three parcels located in Council District 3 and the 17th Ward being identified as Block 3B, Lot 100, Block 3C, Lot 182, and Block 12A, Lot 130, from the Urban Development Authority of Pittsburgh to the City of Pittsburgh at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1120. Resolution authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Recycling Partnership for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount not to exceed $210,000 and an in-con support from the Recycling Partnership in an amount not to exceed $125,000 for public outreach or amount of city's recycling services. Bill 1121. Resolution authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Community and Economic Assistance Program in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for renovations to the Lewis Playground. Bill 1122. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 466 of 2020, which authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement with Studio Zood for professional landscape architectural services for home woodpark infrastructure upgrades by increasing the overall cost by $11,116.80 for a new city cost not to exceed $1,864,472.70 over one year. Bill Number 1124. Resolution granting unto Pittsburgh M-NMR Institute their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense at no cost to the city, a retaining wall, tree planter box walls, and concrete steps at 3221 Forbes Avenue, 4th Ward, 6th Council District. Bill 1125. Resolution granting unto UPMC Presbyterian Shady Side their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense at no cost to the city, a new site wall with three planters, two site signs, a landscaped island, a light, three concrete benches, and a planting bed that will extend into the right-of-way at 3701 Fifth Avenue, 4th Ward, 1st Council District. And Bill 1126. Resolution amending Resolution 468, approved September 6, 2022, granting unto United States General Services Administration their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense at no cost to the city to install shallow foundation wedge vehicle barriers and a card reader along with existing security compliant ballards, a post and beam rail, and a swing gate at 1,000 Liberty Avenue, 2nd Ward, 6th Council District.
Thank you. And that takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of National Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1135. Resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Land Bank, allowing the Land Bank to independently access city-owned properties for the purpose of streamlining property assessments and facilitating redevelopment.
And on behalf of myself, if we could begin with the sponsored bill?
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1127. Resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal for Main Street program designation of Central Avenue with the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Will a member please make a motion to waive rule eight on this bill? This is in order to get it in line with a federal grant that the Hill CDC is going after.
Motion to waive rule eight.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1127 will be on this afternoon's standing committee agenda. And now for the communications.
Bill Number 1128. Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay requests on behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Christopher Ragland and for the Department of Parks and Recreation for Jennifer Hayes per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. Bill 1129. Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended November 1, 2024. And Bill 1130. Communication from Rachel Heisler, City Controller, submitting a fiscal audit of the Phipps Conservatory Trust Fund dated October 2024.
We need a motion to re-receiving file?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills have been read, receiving filed. We'll now move on to unfinished business, and we have one appointment.
Unfinished Business Bill 991. Resolution reappointment of Alyssa Aberhart as a member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with the term to expire September 1, 2028.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to amend.
Sorry. I missed, yeah.
Yeah, just a minute.
It's, and it's actually, we need a motion to amend the bill to make it a reappointment.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Thank you. I missed that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been approved. We will now return to proclamations, beginning with Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith.
Thank you. Stay there. Stay there. Stay there. Thank you. Will the veterans please come forward? Do I have your proclamation or does, is Bobby reading it for Erica?
Oh, Teresa. I'll read it.
Oh, you're gonna read yours?
I'll read it.
Thank you. Okay. No, wait, wait. He's gonna read yours.
Sam DeMarco.
Oh, for the, um, here, come up here. Thank you all. Thank you all for being, how dare I come to, Tom Baker's gonna do the county one, so he can be here. Ken had a lead for them. Okay. Okay. And the Honorable Tom Baker is here to read on behalf of, um, who? On behalf of?
Sam DeMarco.
Sam DeMarco for the county's proclamation for the veterans. We're gonna do yours first, and then we're gonna do mine.
All right. Thanks, Council President Kail Smith. So Get Involved Crew will be in just a few minutes, but for now, we just want to really thank the veterans. I'm here on behalf of County Councilman Sam DeMarco and all of County Council as an alum. I was on County Council for eight years, so Ken Varhola and the team asked me to read this proclamation on behalf of the county. Whereas on Veterans Day, we reflect upon the immense burden many men and women took upon themselves when they decided to wear America's uniform and the families who stood alongside them. We salute those men and women for their service, and we express our perpetual gratitude. And whereas in 1919, the Federation of War Veterans Society was formed, its purpose was to partner annually with Allegheny County to provide a Veterans Day Parade in the City of Pittsburgh to honor veterans who reside in Allegheny County. And whereas the Federation of War Veterans Society on Allegheny County and City of Pittsburgh will hold its 105th Annual Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 11th at 10:30, beginning at Liberty Avenue and 10th Street, then proceed down Liberty Avenue. Whereas Pittsburgh is home to the longest-running Veterans Day Parade in the nation, and Pennsylvania is home to the fourth-largest population of veterans in the country. This year's parade will have a special recognition and dedication to Korean War veterans. And I'm gonna jump to the end, so Councilmember Kail Smith can read her full proclamation. Now therefore be resolved that I, County Councilmember Sam DeMarco, do hereby recognize and commend this year's Veterans Day Parade Committee and all the dedicated men and women that continue to make this parade unmatched across the country. The Council of Allegheny County asks all citizens to acknowledge the courage and fortitude of our veterans and realize the importance of keeping their legacy engraved through time. Congratulations and thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your service on behalf of County Council. And Carmella always keeps County Council involved with all of you, so thanks for all that you do to make our world a better place. And with that, we'll turn back to Councilmember Kail Smith. But on behalf of the county, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for doing that. And I'll just say that I come from a family of military people. Except for me. You want me to repeat myself? But, and I'm very thankful and grateful for all their, their work and sacrifice on behalf of our country and on behalf of our military. It's a challenging time for us, for sure, in this, in this country. But I want to thank all of you for keeping this alive. And I hope that we get some, some people. Our military has changed so much. I think by 40% of women, minorities, just different people all across the, across the country who are part of this. And it would be great to see as they come out to start helping you do some of the things that you've been keeping alive here for so long. Thank you. Whereas the Federation of War Veterans Societies of Allegheny County and the City of Pittsburgh will hold its 105th Annual Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 11th, 2024, at 10:30 a.m., starting at the intersection of 10th and Liberty Avenue. Whereas the grand marshal this year is the, is Korean War veteran John DeFilippo. Are you here?
He's not here.
Not here? Okay. John DeFilippo. Mr. DeFilippo was in, was in Army Combat Infantry and received a purple, the Purple Heart for wounds suffered on August 2nd, 1952, on Heartbreak Ridge. While loaded down with ammunition and hand grenades, John was hit with artillery and mortar fire. All of the ammo blew up, and he had injuries to his back, leg, arms, and suffered hearing loss. A MASH unit removed shrapnel, and he spent two months in a hospital. After discharge, he was sent back to guard the POWs and then back onto the front line. He was sent home in July of 1953 and learned of the armistice while aboard, aboard ship. And whereas the Pittsburgh's Veterans Day Parade helps to fulfill the mission of the Federation by teaching and fostering the importance of recognizing our veterans and all that they have sacrificed for this nation. And whereas it is always a great honor and privilege for our city to pay tribute to the men and women who served and who have served in our armed forces. The City of Pittsburgh does hereby call upon its citizens to observe November 11th as Veterans Day in honor of all war veterans living within the City of Pittsburgh and solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly to preserve our heritage and freedoms. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Federation of War Veterans Society of Allegheny County for their continued dedication to all our veterans and for their hard work in making each year's Veterans Day Parade a great success. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 11th, 2024 to be Federation of War Veterans Society Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
You don't say if you want. We'll have you first, yeah. And then you don't have to get him with his jokes.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Kenneth Rzicki. I live in Ohio Township, and I have the honor of being this year's commander of the Federation of War Veterans Society of Allegheny County, Pennsylvania. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Federation and also on behalf of all Allegheny County veterans, both past and present. And I am glad that Councilwoman reminded you all that this year we will have our 105th continuously running Veterans Day Parade. It's the longest continuously running Veterans Day Parade in the United States. We're very proud of that. We honor all veterans at our Veterans Day Parade. But this year, in particular, we are celebrating Korean War veterans. And as Councilwoman Smith just mentioned, our grand marshal, who unfortunately can't be here today, did suffer wounds in defense of our country on Heartbreak Ridge in Korea. Also, I just want to point out, our parade committee has done exceptional work. Our parade committee is made up of veterans and non-veterans, men and women, and a lot of young people joined us in the past couple of years. And they bring energy and expertise and a willingness to work, not just to tell us what we should do, but offering their services free of charge. What can I do? And our parade chairman happens to be with us today. That's Chris Brown. And Chris, you may want to say a few words. Thank you all again.
Hey, sorry for the shades. It's pretty early for me as a Marine Corps veteran. But I do want to say, yes, this is the oldest parade in the country. We're tied with NYC. Don't put that in the press, though. But we are the best, and we, we also have a World War II tank this year, which is hard to get down. You gotta get volunteers to donate their flatbed trucks and stuff like that. We got the World War II actors coming. We have over 100 units this year in organizations. And we are the oldest parade, so let's make this parade great again.
Thank you. Do you want to say who's here? Let's just, I'll give you the mic. You can all introduce yourselves, except for Dick. He can't. He cannot introduce himself. He tells jokes every year. One-line jokes from him, like Laffy Taffys. Do I pass? How do I turn this on? Thank you. Thank you. Good thing you sat there. Do we pass this around?
My name is Doc Jim Hay. I'm Allegheny County Federation and Society of War Veterans, Junior Vice Commander, and I represent the veterans of foreign wars.
Bob Bussard, I'm the commander of American Legion Post 725, Cary Brentwood, also a member of the Federation. Thank you.
I'm Richard Stefanik, VFW Post 9197. I'm Allegheny County VFW Commander, and I would like to thank the city and the county for all their support over the last 105 years. Thank you very much.
My name is Carmella Mellon. I come from a family of military veterans and also my husband, and I'm here to always support our veterans and give a hand wherever they need it.
No, he gets it last.
Good morning. I'm Joseph Podolinski. I'm the Senior Vice of the Federation.
Robert Emrick, VFW member.
Lou Bob Gerner, 101st Airborne, retired.
Dick, come up here. Come up here. I gotta tell you the story about this guy, okay? Every year he comes, he sees, or anytime he sees me, he gives me Laffy Taffy jokes and won't stop. Yeah. And then I gave him the mic one time, said, here, go ahead, this is your time, do it. He froze. So I tease him all the time. Go ahead.
Oh, we're using this one?
Teresa, turn the button.
I normally, I normally don't say a few words. It's usually a lot of words, but I really shouldn't today, I guess. I'm also a, Dick Silk, I'm a past commander of the Federation, but just happened to, these are things you might not have heard on the regular news. This would be alternative news. I just happened to see this in the alternative newspaper, so I thought I'd throw this out. Now, I might have said these before, but I can't remember. You know, it's like, I used to play the piano by ear, but then I realized it was easier to use my fingers. It was bad. All right, consider the source.
She liked it, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry I brought that up. And then I probably, I don't know whether you heard this or not, also, this lady went before the judge. She said, why'd you hit your house where the chair said table was too heavy? Wasn't good, I know. Wasn't good, I know. See, there was one.
One more, that's it.
Oh, wait, one more, one more, quickly. All right, let's see. Okay, they're in an office building and they're, they're on the water cooler. It's break time, so there's a new employee, you know, they're like, well, how was your old job? Why'd you leave? She said, well, something my boss said. She, what was that? You're fired. All right, I got more.
Watch your step. Councilwoman Warwick, you wanted to say something? Did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah, I just.
Here, wait, wait, wait. Councilwoman speaking.
I just wanted to, well, first of all, say thank you, everyone here, for your service. And, and, you know, I think it's, it's very apropos that we're focusing on the Korean War this year. I mean, right now, as I'm sure you all are aware, you know, there are North Korean troops marching now with Russian troops on Ukraine, you know, in threat of democracy there and also in Europe. So sadly, these are, you know, we are sort of slowly getting closer to repeats in history that the group here knows all too well. And, yeah, so anyway, I appreciate you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
May I respond to that?
How about we have all councilmembers come up? Do what you want to say.
I just wanted to say something about the support that the.
I just don't want to get into anything political, that's all.
No, no, not, not political at all.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was pleased to be invited to a celebration earlier this year. The, as you all know, there is a Korean War Veterans Memorial on the North Shore. And what I couldn't believe was the support that the Korean-American community here in Pittsburgh gives to our Korean War veterans. I was just blown away. They have teams of adults and teenagers that on a regular basis go down to clean that memorial. And the support they were given is just unbelievable.
Thank you. Because I think we're all Americans, we just want to come up. Everyone want to come up? Yeah, you can just take, make sure. Them both open, I think.
Yeah, you're right.
Can one of you open it? Can one of you hold this one open?
Thank you. Thank you all for your service. I'll see you at the parade. Thank you all. You have to take these. This is my, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's a picture. I love that.
See you, Carmella. Yeah, definitely, definitely. Good seeing you. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, can I have Steve and Linda Smith, please, come forward?
Yes.
And all their guests. I just have to say, this Bessie Miller is amazing. We've given her a proclamation before. You're going to kill me for saying this on TV. She was in a car accident a couple of weeks ago. They found that she had a carotid artery in a brain aneurysm, which she's having a procedure done tomorrow, and she's here to celebrate her people, because this is what she does. So I have to say something about you, Bess. Whereas Steve and Linda Smith were married, and no relation, by the way, okay? Were married in nineteen eighty-seven and have since raised three children together in the neighborhood of Elliot. And whereas Steve has been involved with the Elliot West End Athletic Association, which Bessie is the chairperson, since nineteen ninety-eight and has coached baseball, softball, and soccer for the association and was a member of the board. Steve continues to support baseball by coaching an adult league out of Herschel Field. And whereas both Steve and Linda were actively involved within the community, they have attended the West End Elliot Citizens Council meetings, which are now the West, the Elliot Community Group meetings, they continue to attend for the past thirty years, and participated in numerous local cleanups in the neighborhood. And whereas they have volunteered in the, for Pittsburgh Public Schools, Linda volunteered at Stevens Elementary as a member of the PTA and helped fundraise for the school's events. And Steve created a basketball team for the local ages, youth, ten to fourteen, and played in Pittsburgh Stevens and Pittsburgh Westwood Schools. And whereas Steve and Linda raise awareness for children with disabilities with the Pittsburgh Public Schools and locally in honor of their son, who is living with autism and was educated in the Pittsburgh Public School system. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Steve and Linda Smith for their volunteerism and dedication to their community. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four to be Steve and Linda Smith Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Say a few words, Steve. He's a man of few words, too, believe me.
Thank you, Teresa, for sponsoring us, and, and thank you, Board, Council, and we appreciate all the good work you all are doing for the city. I've, I met Teresa actually twenty-four years ago when she was actually working in the Westwood Athletic Association in a Little League tournament. And that's when I first started. So she's, she's been one of us for a long time, and the people love Teresa over the West End. I'm very proud to be a member of the West End Elliot Athletic Association for the last twenty-five years. It's an outstanding organization, one of the best in the city, that I believe right now. And we're, we're fighting to keep youth sports going under the leadership of Bessie Miller, who's a lifetime member of the organization. And we just wrapped up our forty-third year of soccer just last week, and sixty-one years of actual total athletic youth programs. And we're very proud to do it, and we're fortunate to have a lot of good volunteers. My wife Linda has always been supportive of me and my two children, right here now, Nicole and Tim, and my son Matthew, who is at home right now. But we're very proud to be members of Elliot, and we, we plan on staying as a city member, and I appreciate you.
You also help with Open Field, too.
Yes, oh yeah, we're very, the Open Field program that has been at Elliot now, three years now?
Three years.
Yeah, it's opened up a lot of new avenues for younger kids, and the, the immigrant community has come in and really helped us thrive, and it's, it's, it's been a blessing to serve all of those people. But thank you once again for honoring us with this, but it's, it's been a pleasure.
You deserve.
Thank you.
Bessie, Linda, do you want to say anything? Linda, do you want to say?
No.
Nicole?
I'll talk for them. On behalf of the Elliot West End Athletic Association, I just want to thank Teresa Smith for everything she's done for our association over the last fifty years, because she's been my friend prior to that. But on, on behalf of Steve Smith and his family, their dedication goes far and beyond, because Steve has coached, his kids have all played in the association. And even though they're not playing anymore, he still provides and he still is very active in the community with which his kids all played for. If we didn't have youth sports in our communities, I don't know what our kids would be doing. But it is a big, key, vital in every community, and I wish that we get more help throughout the city with other things to help keep this promotion and of youth sports going. So thank you, Steve, thanks for all the dedication, and thank you, Council, and everyone in the City of Pittsburgh for making it happen in our association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add, if you don't know what Open Field is, they get kids from North Hugh Heights, Crafton Heights, and everywhere in between, and they bring kids to play together for sports, and they just do an amazing job uniting Pittsburghers. So thank you for all that we do. Everyone will come up for the photo? Do you mind? Good luck tomorrow to Bessie and her surgery.
Thank you.
You're proud, believe me, I see. Thank you, thanks for understanding. I was just proposing this proclamation to you, but you didn't do it. She said, yeah. Then she can't come in today, so he's talking. So then we tried to get the. There's only two of them. There's a limit of two for councilmember each one. Yeah, two, two for councilmember. You can do read one.
As they come forward, Councilwoman Strausberger was initially going to present this proclamation, but life happens and she needed to stay home to take care of her child this morning. So I'm stepping in for her, but with great pride and honor, as this is something we've done yearly now for.
Yeah, all fifteen years.
All fifteen years. So this is really exciting. I will say in advance, I apologize if I mess up anyone's name, but I will do my best. Whereas founded by Allegheny County Councilman Tom Baker, Get Involved is holding its fifteenth annual Pittsburgh Service Summit on Tuesday, November nineteenth. Whereas Get Involved enables student leaders and young professionals to stay active by providing a variety of leadership-focused events, service-oriented programs, and courses, and inspiring trainings throughout the region. Whereas awards are given annually to local young professionals ages twenty-one through thirty-five in the nonprofit business and governmental sectors who dedicate their time and talent to community organizations and who are making a positive difference in the region. Whereas congratulations to the following individuals. Person of the Year, Saleem Gabriel and Teresa Blackwell. Emerging Leader Award, Faith Kinhein. Patty Varoska Child Advocacy Award, Landis Andrews and Julian Turner. Dr. Tom Baker Community Leader Award, John Chamberlain and Roger Haney. Western PA Rising Stars, Jacob Bucet, Joshlyn Buheit, Deanna David, Amanda French, Lindsay Groves, Bradley Hill, Jake. Help me up with this one.
Curiosities.
Curiosities, thank you. Rebecca Nesbit, Rachel Pettiford, Sean Spencer, and Carla Tolerant. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Get Involved Incorporated for encouraging young adults to become more active and engaged in their communities, and for organizing the annual Pittsburgh Service Summit. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November fourth, to be Get Involved Incorporated Day in the City of Pittsburgh. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, everyone.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Lavelle, and thanks for all of City Council having us back. This is our fifteenth straight year at City Council, which is so nice. City Councilman Bill Pedudo brought us fifteen years ago for the first one, and so many good memories have been experienced right here in Chambers over the last fifteen years. We can't wait for the nineteenth. But I've got to say, the three-step plan of getting to go to City Council, and this year, for the first time, getting to see what a full meeting is like, actually, is really helpful and interesting, and I mean that in a really genuine way. I hope it's really a good experience for everyone, but especially our young professionals that are here with us here today to get to experience that. So it's an inspiring night. We encourage everyone to come out on November nineteenth. All fifteen years of the Get Involved Service Summit have taken place in the City of Pittsburgh proper, which we're very proud of, many years at Carlo University. And I will say, as a little guy growing up in Greenfield and Councilmember Warwick's district, whose aspirational goal someday would get to be sitting in that seat, it's pretty cool to be up here, too, with these amazing people who are changing the world in so many positive ways. We always say within Get Involved, why not me? And what we've seen with this group is a big group of community leaders that think, why not me, as it relates to changing the world and changing our community in a positive way. So you probably see some recognizable faces, including Saleem, of course, who we're very proud to have associated with the event this year. But if, real quickly, I know you've had a long meeting already, maybe everyone can just introduce themselves and say their favorite thing. We'll give them a sentence, a sentence, okay? Their favorite thing to be involved with. And we'll start with the Fellow Person of the Year. We've got a lot of Light of Life people, any Light of Life fans among Council? Right, we've got a lot of Life supporters.
Good morning, my name is Lou Teresa Blackwell. It is an honor to stand before you, City Council, thanking you for this opportunity. I am Shelter Manager for the Light of Life Rescue Mission, working with women and children who are most vulnerable in our community and making sure that they are safe, especially during this time.
Thank you. Good morning, thank you so much for this honor. My name's Deanna David, I'm the Director of Programs at Variety, the children's charity. And my favorite thing is just having the blessing of having a job that doesn't feel like a job, because I'm doing something that's, I'm super passionate about, and that's supporting individuals with disabilities through adaptive equipment. So thank you.
My name's Amanda French, thank you again, as everyone's saying, for this honor. I'm Development Coordinator at Pass Event Hospital Foundation. We support UPMC Pass Event, and not to steal your words, but having a job to give back to those who give to us is just amazing. And I get to do it professionally and in my personal time within our fire department, which I think is kind of how I got nominated for this award. So it's just an honor, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Lindsay Groves, and thank you so much for this honor. I represent the Alzheimer's Association of Greater Pennsylvania, and just being able to provide resources to our county, especially as we know, we have an aging population and we need to serve those that are underserved. So it has been an incredible privilege of mine over the last three years to be the Development Manager for the Pittsburgh Walk Down to Alzheimer's, and thank you for all of your
Good morning, my name is Bradley Hill, thank you so much for this honor. I am currently the Program Coordinator down at the Greenwood Plan. My favorite thing is having the honor to serve our underprivileged and minority communities who are struggling to feel represented. I believe that we are pioneering best practices for supporting our marginalized identity communities, and I'm just honored to be a part of that work and looking forward to continue blossoming that here in this city. So, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Rachel Pettiford, I am the Business Community Liaison at Pittsburgh Job Corps. My favorite thing is working with my student leaders, my SGA at Job Corps, and developing them into the leaders they will one day be, and also investing my time in developing, developing our future workforce. I'm so honored to be here with you all and to share this moment with you all. Thank you.
What's up, everybody? My name is Sean Spencer, and I'm co-founder of Future Kings Mentoring. In our organization, we provide mentorship to black males in the city of Pittsburgh. We teach them financial literacy, entrepreneurship, life skills, to make them holistic young men for the future. And in the work I've been doing for over seven years in the nonprofit sector, I have to say my favorite thing is making, is when you see that light in the student, light up, to know that they, that they can be better, it's the best feeling in the world. Honored to be here, thank you.
Good morning, all. Tom, you're the best cheerleader this region has ever had. My name is Saleem Gabriel, I work at the Pittsburgh Promise, and before that, at the Pittsburgh Project. I only work for agencies that have initials TPP. And my favorite thing is just to get to run errands on kids' behalf and move boulders out of their way.
Good morning, thank you for this honor. My name is Jake Curazis, I'm the Food Pantry Manager at Light of Life. It takes a lot of courage for someone to come. It takes a lot of courage for someone to come, get food at a food pantry. So, my favorite thing is just being able to meet people where they're at and work alongside our volunteers.
Morning. Thank you, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Buhyte. I'm the Communications Coordinator at Light of Life Rescue Mission. And I just love bringing awareness to the needs of our homeless community and connecting others to ways they can help them.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's a huge honor. My name is Roger Haney. I'm the owner and founder of Spectrum Fudge. It's a gourmet fudge and candy company in Pittsburgh. And I think the thing that excites me the most is having nine different high schools come in, individuals with disabilities, and busts both physical and mental disabilities, and giving them an opportunity for work and life skills. And then when they graduate, providing them work opportunities. That would be my favorite thing. Thank you again.
Good morning, everybody. My name is John Chamberlain. I'm one half of Ya Jagoff Media. We have a podcast, and we enjoy telling Pittsburgh stories like we're hearing today. So, I encourage everybody here to make sure you know how to get ahold of me or my partner, Rachel, so that we could tell the Pittsburgh's and Western Pennsylvania stories the way they should be told. Very positive. Thank you. Thank you again for the honor.
Hi. My name is Julian Turner. I am the co-founder of Helping Out Our People. We focus on the grief and trauma that comes from dealing with gun violence. And my favorite thing about that is the connections we get to make and the community that we build to, you know, kind of run through this new life that everybody gotta go on after those events. So, on top of having an amazing family, I continuously build a great community and family around me with these people who are on this difficult journey. So, but thank you for the award. I'm very happy and blessed to be here with all you today. I'm super excited about it. I don't know if my kids are anymore, but we're having a good time. So, thank you.
I was gonna say, Julian Turner has the best-behaved children I've ever seen. Kahari, we have, like, younger children. We need, like, some parenting lessons. But this is a wonderful group of people. And I'll just shout out Roger and John. They're winning the award that's named in my dad's memory. My dad, some of you have heard over the years, passed away in ninety-one. He taught at Miller, at Pioneer, at Brashir, and he was the original Albert Einstein. So, if you ever see the school district mascot, that was actually my dad in there back in the eighties when it was conceived. So, he loved our school district. He loved this city. So, knowing that John and Roger are receiving that award, it means a lot to me as somebody that grew up in the Councilmember Warwick's district. So, thank you, thank you, thank you again. We'll do a group photo, but come celebrate with us on the nineteenth. It's gonna be a great celebration at Vellum Fermentation right here in the city of Pittsburgh. We're looking forward to it. And if you cannot be inspired about the future of our city after meeting especially these young leaders and lead all of us of all ages, you're not listening, right? There's so many good things going on. We're so proud of all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do to make the world a better place.
All members will come forward.
Brother Mel, this is, yeah, this one's already on Facebook.
And with that, we'll now move on to reports of committee for finance action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number eleven oh seven, reported a committee on finance and law for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill ten sixty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Meyer, Onkovic, and Scott LLP for expert legal services in connection with a litigation matter filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an amount not to exceed ten thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents over one year. And Bill ten sixty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of finance to extend existing contracts with financial institutions designated by council to act as depositories for the city of Pittsburgh in two thousand and twenty-four by extending the contracts by one additional year through two thousand and twenty-five as permitted by Chapter two twenty-one oh nine of the city code at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number eleven oh nine, reported a committee on public works and infrastructure for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill ten seventy, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the second ward of the city in order to advance a Smithfield Street project. Costs for those temporary construction easements shall not exceed ninety thousand dollars, reimbursable at eighty percent. And Bill Number ten seventy-one, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the favor of MC Enterprises for the purpose of an interior renovation at Police Zone Four and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed five thousand eight hundred one dollars over one year.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger? Mrs. Strasburger? Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally, and it takes us back to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number eleven oh eight, reported a committee on public safety and wellness for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill ten fifty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the COVID SF four local law enforcement support in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for records, management system software, and training and data integration.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger? Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number eleven ten, reported a committee on land use and economic development for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill ten seventy-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services and/or data collection activities as associated with the two thousand and twenty-four Emergency Solutions Grant funds at a cost not to exceed one million one hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and four dollars. And Bill ten seventy-three, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to provide administration and operating expenses, housing and housing-related supportive services to persons with AIDS, HIV/AIDS, and their families at a total cost not to exceed one million four hundred nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Bill ten seventy-four, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation and administration of the Housing Counseling Program and related costs, cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Bill ten seventy-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with various community-based organizations for the implementation of the two thousand and twenty-four Neighborhood Economic Development Program and to provide for the payment of the costs thereof, cost not to exceed seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Bill ten seventy-seven, resolution further amending Resolution Number eight fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-four Capital Budget that Propose two thousand and twenty-four Community Development Program and a two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by decreasing CDBG personnel by one hundred two thousand ten dollars, decreasing Emergency Solutions Grant by four thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars, increasing housing opportunities for persons with AIDS by three hundred nine thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars, and decreasing Home Investment Partnerships Program by five hundred four thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars. These changes are made in response to program allocations by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and come at no cost to the city of Pittsburgh.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number eleven eleven, reported a committee on innovation, performance, asset management, and technology for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill ten fifty-nine, resolution amending Resolution eight fifty of two thousand and twenty-one, which authorized the city of Pittsburgh and the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement with MAUCA to provide a building benchmarking management platform software solution by adding funding for contract year two thousand and twenty-four and increasing the total cost by eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars for a new total cost not to exceed ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Bill ten sixty, resolution amending Resolution seven seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Risk Factor LLC for subscription to Risk Factor database for all data and hazard layers for all perils and all parcels in the city of Pittsburgh, enabling support of city departments and planning for weather-related hazards by increasing the approved amount by twenty-five thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars over two years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. And finally, that takes us to Councilman Kari Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number eleven twelve, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for October... Excuse me, for October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill ten sixty-one, resolution providing for the execution of a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the performance of certain work in connection with the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Program and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed six million two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, council districts all. Bill Number ten sixty-two, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh designating URA as the city's agent for administration of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Investments Partnership Program at a cost not to exceed one million nine hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars for all council districts. Bill ten sixty-three, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements providing for the transfer of funds not to exceed twenty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars to the city of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase of vehicles for use by the Office of Community Health and Safety. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant Funds. Bill ten sixty-four, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh and a Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of block twenty-three F, lots one ninety-eight and one ninety-nine in the twenty-fifth ward of the city of Pittsburgh, Carrington Street and Alpine Avenue. Council District Number One, no cost to the city. Bill ten sixty-five, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly-owned properties in the first ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block eleven K, lots two seventy-one three and two seventy-one ten, two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and five Boulevard of the Allies, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city. Bill ten sixty-six, resolution authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, and into the publicly-owned property in the twelfth ward, city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block one twenty-five M, lot two ninety-seven, Hamilton Avenue, Council District Nine, at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Anything from members? If not, that takes us to meeting announcements. This afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at twelve-thirty. Then on Wednesday, November sixth, at one-thirty, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill nine eighty-three as it relates to conditional use application. Speaker registration will close at twelve P.M. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. Also, may call the clerk's office at four one two two five five twenty-one thirty-eight. And then quickly, as just a reminder, given all that's occurring in the city today, both the city and the county have asked nonessential employees to leave early. And for our meeting this afternoon, we've also allowed for departmental figures, as well as ourselves and our staff, to join remotely, so that we're decreasing the amount of congestion that's gonna be in and around downtown. Councilwoman Smith?
I want to thank you and Council President and Madam Clerk for making sure that we had alternative ways to conduct business. So, thank you for that. Just briefly, I just, I met with a group of kids yesterday. You know, I get a lot of phone calls about kids racing on the streets, doing burnouts, you know, all sorts of things happening. I always go up and I talk to the kids, and almost every time, I have a good conversation. But yesterday, I met a group of kids, and then they were telling me that they use their cars for trunk or treats and things like that. They're actually contributing back to the community. I would love to see us have a place, instead of saying kids... I would love to see us have a place, instead of saying kids, we're not enforcing the laws with the, you know, alternating, the mufflers and those kinds of things, but, so if we're not going to do those things, and we're not going to enforce laws, I wish we'd find a place where kids can do these things and enjoy them safely and respectfully, because it's really causing a lot of, you know, concern and dissension in all of our neighborhoods, I think, or at least I know in every sector of the city. So I would just say that I hope that we can start finding some places for young people, was we look for things for people to do differently than what we're doing now for kids. Not everybody loves sports, not everybody, you know, loves music, not everybody loves dance, but some people like cars, and so I wish we had a place similar like they do in the suburbs and other places, for our kids to enjoy their cars, that's all. And I want to race them. I did used to race them.
Anything else from members? If not, we motion.
Council President, sorry, yeah, real quick, I was trying to, it's hard to wave my hand at you virtually. Real quickly, I wanted to address, there was a letter sent from Chief Wheatley to you on, I believe it was Friday?
Yes.
Thursday of last week, and regarding the mayor's absences and the letters that he is sending to council during those times. I read through the letter, and do you have some further concerns? So I would like to call for a post agenda and invite Chief Wheatley there for that, and to work as quickly as possible to call for this post agenda related to absentee letters from the administration.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll work with you, Councilman Charlin, and the clerk's office to get that scheduled promptly. Anything else from members? If not, need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.